He told, he told me to tell Danny to come, but he doesn't finish it.
Some years I fell on.
He used to, he didn't.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, I didn't like that.
Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. If everyone would like to stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Review of the minutes, July the fifteenth. Did everyone get a chance to look at those? I'll need a motion.
I didn't even get a chance to look at them.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for July the fifteenth. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Anybody here for audience call? Department head Shane.
Sisters.
July stats, great, nobody obvious. We had two hundred and sixty-two calls for service, fourteen arrests, seven describing offensive, two domestic battery. Uh, we covered a stolen vehicle and four more. Hundred and sixty-five total traffic stop, fifty-one written tickets. I'm busy, ready to get school started tomorrow.
Okay, we had some issues with the park, right?
Yeah.
We did have kids up there throwing some rocks, um, ten to thirteen years old, five of them, they've been trespassing from the park for one year.
Okay.
Uh, another incident at Fireman's Park, gun was brandished. Both those two was actually arrested last night and they've been banned in periods.
Good.
They're gonna come back, they gotta come talk to you guys to get that let is, uh, thing, gun being pointed when there's kids around.
Hmm, no.
Like, they need to come back.
Nope.
So, the park here, night before last, did anything happen last night?
Not last night.
Okay.
There was a fight between a bunch of kids up.
Okay.
Around the laundromat area.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you what was going on.
Yeah, yeah.
Hmm.
I'd heard it was here, but probably was there.
It was up there, and they're getting, like, they're ready for school to start.
Yeah.
Well, that's because it's been so hot, they've been in it for so long.
Yeah.
Kids have been a lot late.
Well, and we're hoping our new parking situation with schools gonna work out.
Find out tomorrow.
That was search warrant. We met with superintendent and.
I think it'll take a little bit, a lot of the parents that don't really read all their emails and stuff, so.
Yeah.
Hopefully, it'll get out quick, though.
Put it on social media.
Yeah.
Yeah, hopefully, they'll get it quick and get it figured out.
Send it to him as well, show him they opened a house, hopefully.
Right. Good.
Right. I'll see how it goes.
Well, let's keep our fingers crossed, so you're not getting all those calls. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott.
Well, we started flushing fire hydrants today and hopefully tomorrow maybe we should be done, if not Thursday morning. Get that out of the way, which we got this side of town before school started, so there shouldn't be any issues with anything. Uh, we've been working on these lights out here.
What about the fire hydrant there at Volt? There, along the highway, it has a bag over it?
Yeah, that one's bad.
So, do we have plans to fix it, or?
Uh, yeah, but nobody, it's such an old one, I can't get it repaired, or trying to get it repaired, but it's stuck. Somebody said pour coke down in it and try that, but.
So, I mean.
Cause they're kinda high.
Well, I mean, but we need to fix it.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, we need to, it's, it's been that way for a couple of months now, right?
Yeah.
Or longer, so.
Yeah.
Let's get it fixed, cause if a fire breaks out, I don't want us to be the cause that.
Yeah. Well, likely, there is one pretty close to.
Right there, yeah.
Yeah, I see there's one.
I know, but I still, if anything goes wrong, I just.
Well, I. And I told it, and when it, when it didn't go, I called the fire chief and let him know that it's bagged and.
Right, yeah, right.
That's the only one out of the hundred and thirty that.
Yeah.
You, you had one last year on Sharon Court, you had to replace.
Yeah, well, yeah, they had to get it replaced, I tried to, tried to fix it, I don't.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, well, if we can't fix it, let's, let's get it, let's get it changed out.
But, yeah, I'll, I'll get a price on it or see if I can get it, get it worked on first.
Yeah.
Right, right.
But, and we've been working, we've worked out here, me and Ezra all day on this, and Larry.
Yeah.
So, we're getting ready to, I called in low case, so Friday we'll probably drill the hose.
Okay.
And get the wire ready and pour, pour the concrete, get that part out of the way. I talked to the guys.
Matt.
He said that lights didn't have anything to do with what he was doing, so.
Good.
I said, I'm just gonna put them in a row.
Oh, okay. Wherever they are, not the same places they are now.
No. Close, they're just, they're just gonna be, you know, straight running right out of here. That one, instead of out there on that point, will be back this way about right now. The same area, just not quite the same spot.
Yeah.
Well, the light up different anyway.
Yeah, well, we had, we just put that do light there, well, we might, it'd be wasted light, if we put it out there, we'll put it back here.
Yeah.
Um.
Close to the sidewalk, people walking and stuff, so, yeah.
Yeah. And I did, the tree we looked at that day when we was walking, uh, it's to take it down and, and completely haul off, it's three thousand dollars. It's a red oak, it's a big one. So, I haven't had a chance to talk to Kobe about where they would come out of, but, uh.
That's the one that's ready to fall, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cross limbs.
Uh, limbs are, yes, limbs are dead on.
Well, one.
Crossed, picking limbs are.
Trust me, do it, cause one fell at the college today and took part of a roof and the guttering down, so.
Well, like you say, once, like you had said, once it's been called in from, like, a resident.
Right, yeah.
Pretty much, if they complained about it, then they don't do anything.
You need to do it, yeah.
It kinda comes back to bite you.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's the deal on that, that's three thousand and, it's like, I haven't had a chance to talk with him yet.
Would anybody be interested in purchasing the wood? I know red oak is a really workable wood.
Well, I don't know how it work, you don't know what kind of.
Rank.
What it looks like till you, till you cut it down. I mean, yeah, you're right, red oak, that's, that's what I thought.
You don't know if it's rotten in the inside?
No, because I can have it dropped for, you know, I can haul the logs off, if you wanna do that. But, I think it, it's probably half price to have it just put on the ground.
Yeah.
It's a big tree, you know, I mean, I've called.
It'd take your whole staff.
Well, we called them before down at the tree, we're playing Big Oak Trees Fall, me and Marvin Smith loaded them in dump truck and. I don't even know if there's sawmills anymore Baxter's where we went.
I think Burton's is still.
Okay, connect, bought it and we, you know.
Well, if the wood is good, we could reach out to them and see if they would like to, to buy it.
It'd be a big, it'd be a big log.
It's a pretty good size.
It'd be a big log.
Yeah, it's a big tree.
So, I think it was half price to drop it, I think. Quote me on that, I don't have it.
I think that's what you said that day, we walked around the DNR, yeah.
Yeah. But I think that's all I had, we just cutting some trees down, made across, then clustered trees that needed, cut down for a while before the school started. Right there behind Circle K, there was a big.
Oh, yeah.
That's the hanging over, and I just block, closed the road Friday and cut them down.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I'm sure the school will let me know if there's any more that need trimmed, the bus drivers usually.
Let them know.
Yeah.
Sure, sure. Boy, they're really going to town on the Dollar General Market.
Yeah, I need to get down there because, uh, I'm gonna have the state fire inspector go with me next time.
Mm-hmm.
He said, he saw any poor name and get, get a visit.
Right.
Just kinda wait until they start running electric, there's no sense going in there until it's ready for the.
Sure, sure, yeah.
Toward the end.
And the houses are going up and.
Gave a permit this morning, or like.
Ones already sold.
Best, best for that one.
So, they're putting a fifth one in.
Yeah, good.
So, and I heard he was selling, you know, people were buying.
Do they run along?
Yeah. Planning commission's been busy, haven't we, Ken?
Yeah.
He wants to be busier and Scott and I are like, no.
Yeah. Most of the visions, I want controversy.
Yeah. Well, we're, we're gonna have it coming up, I haven't told you yet.
Well, that's all I have unless you guys have any, have any, anything that I don't know about or issues or anything.
I don't know.
Can't think of anything.
Okay.
If we do, I'll call you.
Okay.
I call him every other day.
Kobe, you got anything?
Audit's going on over at the town hall, um, this is been a couple of weeks, um, next week they should be done with it. Um, they haven't really come out and said much, so that's good. They said if they find anything, they'll, they'll come talk to us.
One of the things was good?
Yeah, one of the things was good, um, back in two thousand twenty-one, uh, the county sent a check for twenty-eight thousand dollars. Um, we never received it, um, and so we called the county and they're reissuing a new check. It was still on their books, so, so, yeah. So, yeah, that was very good.
That was a nice little surprise.
And we all got a form to fill out, did you get one, Jean?
Yeah, he said he would like to get them by the end of the week, because he's.
By the end of the week.
He, he put on its thing August fifteenth.
Yeah, but he said he'd like to get them by the end of the week, because on Tuesday, they hope to be done.
I sent them in.
Yeah, yeah, by next Tuesday, they hope to be done.
Yeah. And Tim, or, you've got one, Tim.
I, I give him one tonight, yeah, so.
Yeah, he's got one.
Well, yeah, that's, uh.
And he, did he send it to any of the town employees, cause he said something?
Scott got one.
I got one, yeah.
Uh, Kim got one, Linda got one, um, a six and then a two.
Okay. Okay. And I, I told him to send one to Shane, cause it's about fraud, so.
I don't, I don't think he.
I've never got anything like that before when I seen that.
I don't.
It's a new thing.
Yeah, this is a new thing, yeah, so.
Yeah, I talked to Kobe about this one, cause I couldn't pull it up on my phone, I had to buy it, land it on, or.
Right.
Sh- Shane went on there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Shane went on there.
Okay.
So.
He lucked out this time.
Yep.
Alright, anything else, Kobe?
No, that's it.
Alright, old business, update on the progress of the DNR project, that went really well, um, we walked last week with her, uh, they were very positive. The one thing that we do have to get is signs ordered, we need to have those special signs and they'd like at least two or three of them through the park. That was one thing we did not have.
Special signs.
Yes, it's like.
For what?
Um, for the DNR, so.
They're thirty dollars a sign.
That they funded it, or, okay, yeah, well, that's.
Yeah, 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 and, and they'll, and they'll come back, they'll come back periodically.
Yeah.
Just to take a look at it.
Yeah.
And check on it and everything, yeah.
That's natural.
We thought about putting one on the tennis courts or by the bathroom, mayor.
Right.
Well, she asked for one on the tennis courts.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Well, that was her biggest, yeah, one of the biggest.
And then we thought about the concession stand, just visible, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, so we have to get those made.
Yeah.
And, uh, but, so just now it's just final paperwork, um, she said that to send in the bills that we have so we could get, is it fifty-nine thousand?
Fifty-nine, close to sixty, yeah.
Something that will get reimbursed for the park, so, so that'd be good, getting that back in the budget.
Yep.
So, yeah, so that went real, really well, so I'm excited, so. Update employee handbook, you and I need to jump back on that, don't we?
Yeah, we'll schedule this evening, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, we'll start working with that, um, the veterans garden, he didn't mention that when he was in here.
Now, I forgot to.
Davidson didn't, he was supposed to send everything, we had kind of everything, and he was gonna send it to Alan, I'd asked him to send it to Alan, so, um, I'll have to. Scott, if you see Scott Davidson, will you see if he's got that sent to.
Yeah.
To him, cause he had all the, the paperwork and everything.
Okay.
So. Neighborhood speed bumps, uh, we're not looking at really speed bumps now, we're looking more at those flashing signs, right?
Yeah.
Did we hear any more back on those?
We tried to reach out to them to get information on who's using them, towns, departments, they wouldn't give us that information.
Yeah, people are funny like that anymore.
Yeah, like a town, and it's not like we'll give them personal.
I know. I know.
Kind of red flag to me.
Yeah, is there somebody else to go with?
Yeah.
I mean, I see them out.
I've never seen one.
Yeah, I seen one the other, I was trying to think of where I was at, I think it was down in, in Clarksville. I think I, cause I was like, oh, there's one of those.
Hmm.
Should we reach out to the people who originally were asking for speed bumps and kinda see what their preference would be?
Well, their preference is speed bumps, yeah.
Yeah, but that's not gonna.
Yeah.
It just is not gonna fit the town, I mean, it's just.
I think we figured that it would maybe cause more.
Well, it'd be hard for Scott to scrape the streets and.
Trouble.
And it's gonna tear up the streets, which costs the town more money.
Yeah.
So, if we could find the signs that maybe slow them down.
But Zachariah was gonna check with towns to see if those signs worked, uh, but Shane just said they kinda got red flags.
I don't know if they're not willing to give the information, it kinda makes me feel like the feedback might not be that good on them.
That's right. And they're eight hundred a piece.
I don't see where they would serve as much purpose, my personal opinion.
Yeah. People will ignore them after a while.
Yeah, I think they'll work great for three months.
Yeah.
But we need to figure out something. So, you and Scott need to work on it. Figure it out.
Charlie has a question.
Yes, Charlie.
When I traveled all the time.
Mm-hmm.
In the wintertime, the states would put up a single pole, and you could one or two buttons, one there passing for snow and the streets were covered. And the other ones were, do not pass signs, they would be covered with snow with these little markers, for some reason didn't hold snow. So, the person coming to know whether he could pass the car, because he was in the passing zone.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if the state's still doing that, cause I don't travel anymore.
Right.
But you might have the chief of police here checking the state, and that's a whole lot cheaper than these nine hundred dollar signs, these just a single pole.
Check into it. Mm-hmm.
Let the person doing the street know that he can't just go a blind, he's got a blind, because there's a marker, stop, raise it up, look like the other one.
Right.
Well, this might be something you were looking to.
Okay, we'll have them look at it.
Well, now that school's starting, kids will be out more. Do the buses go down bolts? They don't let them off the corner, do they?
They just go straight down, have certain drop offs, they let them, I think they make the big loop around the back.
They go straight down. Okay. So, they have to walk. Yeah.
They just don't go down the middle, and then like Hickory, they let off at one end, and they let off at the other end, so.
Best thing I ever had on our street, no buzz. Cause, you know, kids would be late and the bus sit out there running and.
Yeah.
I like it.
Building inspectors, zoning enforcement, they have that tabled right now, till we figure out other things, didn't even have a job description yet, so. Any other old business? New business, payment request in the amount of eight hundred and eighty dollars to Westler Engineering. Scott, does this pretty much finish this, do you know?
Uh.
You probably have no idea.
The law is already finished, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm hoping this is the last little bit.
Well, the good thing, it keeps getting lower.
Yeah, it's smaller each time.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll make the motion to do the payment request.
Is there a second?
One second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Report of the planning commission, I think that's in your hands, Tim?
Yeah.
Oh, yes. So, I have a request, the property located at twenty-eight West Street, Allen Alley, Hanover, Indiana, four seven two four three. House and garage, uh, presented zoning B two, uh, general business request rezoning to R one residential.
And that's from the planning commission?
Yes, the planning commission approved it.
Yes.
So, on that, while we're talking about that, so it's, uh, the address he just gave you, the twenty-eight West Street Alley. And I was looking over the paperwork for, so we could, whether it's signed by them to approve this or not, that's not the actual address that the courthouse has on file for that property. And that garage they want added to it is on a separate piece of property with another address. As far as I, no, I haven't seen.
The alley is on GIS, the alley address is on GIS.
We looked at that.
But it doesn't match.
It's on Jefferson County GIS.
Yeah, that's where I got these from.
Well.
I screenshot it today, I got it right here.
Yeah, and I'll check with the petitioner.
David, you're right, the garage is West Street address, but the house is the twenty-eight West Street Alley or something like that, I got it here.
Yeah, the house is listed as twenty-eight Southwest Alley Street on GIS.
Yeah.
According to their application, they put twenty-eight West Street Alley.
Oh, they left that to us.
Well, they've got it all switched around, it left South out and.
Well, they're gonna put the garage with the house, so that address, that would be on that partial.
Yeah. And I'll, and I'll check with her, but that doesn't affect whether we rezon.
No, it doesn't, it's designing.
Well, it does if they're two separate properties and they're applied to one property.
Yeah.
You what?
They're two separate properties right now is my problem with that.
They're two deeds.
They're two deeds, two addresses.
They had a free survey or?
That's what, that's not been presented to us, I don't know.
Yeah, that would've been a good question to ask. We didn't have any reason, the way they presented it, it was the house and garage.
What they're, what they're wanting to do there, get the concept of it, and I agree fully with the idea of what they're wanting to do, I have no problem with making that a residential piece of property and my personal side of it. But the paperwork has to match the documents for the courthouse and stuff, so I don't know.
And our, our attorney did approve it, as they turned it in, but I'll check with her.
What I'd do is make a motion to table it until we figure out the properties and make sure that the, so everything that they need rezoned is done at the same time.
Yeah.
If we do just that house address, which we can't because it's the wrong address, but if we did just the house and they put the garage with it, the garage property's not rezoned for that address.
Probably if they do a new deed, it'll probably be the same.
And they may have already done that.
Yeah, they need to resurvey it and combine it as one property of one address.
I don't know. Yeah. Yeah.
That matches the records with us and the courthouse.
They just wanna get it sold, and they can't sell it till it's rezoned, but I'll check.
I get it. But it could cause all of us problems if we approve it wrong, too.
Yeah.
I'll check with her.
But I have no problem with approving it once it's, the paperwork's proper.
Ken, I'll check with her and get back to the planning commission.
I'd make a motion to table it for now.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 She asked me if she should come tonight and I said, no, I wish I would've said, yeah.
Should be more than happy.
They never do.
Yeah, I have no problem with what they're wanting to do, just we gotta make sure it matches.
I came by and didn't know that before.
I, I just seen it today, it's the first time I seen it.
Well, yeah, cause Kobe sent the ordinance out.
It says survey is one piece of problem.
It's being done or already done?
Asked him. That's why I just texted her and I said, has the property been surveyed as one? And she said, yes.
Well, they need to get the, however that is and turn that in with the application and what address it's under and. They should have submitted that with it so we could see it.
Yeah.
But.
Will you tell them I'll walk outside?
Okay.
I'll just tell her you guys table it, since she just.
Yeah.
Okay, we have.
Did that open up questions, though, about our application process, or not process, but our application, like, do we need to?
Well, they may have changed the address to the one that's on the application if they got it resurveyed, I don't know, I haven't seen the survey or nothing, so.
Do we need, well, I need to.
Our applications are brand new, uh, I don't know.
I'm just wondering if we should ask, like, about, is it, is the proper, something to the effect of, is the property that you're wishing to rezon, deed is, you know, according to you or?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know the right wording yet, but.
Right.
Well, you, you won't know, I mean, you might, she might have changed it, but who knows how long it's gonna take for, for it to, for the courthouse to put it on the GIF, you know, I mean.
Take the courthouse to get a change.
Yeah, it might be.
It might take a couple of months before, you know.
Maybe our question is, does the property that you're wanting to rezon match with what the courthouse shows? Like, we shouldn't see it until it's been corrected.
And that could take.
That could, who knows how long that could take, yeah.
Long time.
Yeah, but we can't, we can't, I mean, if I'd have known the other night.
But if she has the proper paperwork, if she turns.
We just tabled it the other night, we just said, we can't do this until.
Did she have, did she have the paperwork?
We can check and.
She didn't turn any in.
She didn't turn any in, she just turned in the application, so if she had the paperwork to go with the application, to copy and say, hey, this is done, but it's not been done with the GIF yet.
Yeah.
And then when we get that, I send it to our attorney and he either says you're good or you're not good.
Then we could have moved.
But, no big deal.
I just saying it doesn't match is all I know.
Yeah.
Okay, um, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash ten, discharging BB guns or bows and arrows responsibility apparent. Uh, Shane, Ben had some questions about this one.
So, on that Shane, you know, they got that new open carry, and on this, uh. Oh, it was on my phone, I don't have it from me, but it said something about if you have them in a vehicle, you must put them in the trunk. Well, that goes against that state open carry for people that are law-abiding citizens. You don't have to have it in the trunk. I had to pull it back up, I didn't see it till after I got here. Now, it says for, it shall be unlawful for any person to transport in the passenger compartment of any vehicle operated in the town of Hanover. And then it goes on to tell you what, but it doesn't say juvenile. And I was gonna ask you about your thoughts on like the, uh, bow and arrows, I know like me and Michael, I practice shooting in my backyard in a target with a bow and arrow, have for years. I don't know that that's, a lot of people in town do, I see targets up.
Same way with BB guns.
You know.
She actually brought the survey to the meeting, the planning commission.
She passed something around.
Yeah, that was the survey.
Yeah.
She's out of town, so I s- she's gonna have, get Bob's home, I just have to take a screenshot of the survey.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get in touch with them.
Yeah, we didn't disapprove it, we just.
That's why I told her, I said, it hasn't been, uh, submitted to the courthouse.
We just gotta make sure that address and stuff matches, you know.
It shows two addresses and if this garage will be part of the alley address is what I was telling.
Right.
That was my question on that.
So, are we gonna table the BB thing, even though our attorney's sorry approved it?
Right, so, yeah, uh, for I said, and let them know you're concerned.
Well, I'm not a lawyer or nothing, I just, I mean, I carry and I know a lot of people do, but I mean, it's.
I'll need a motion.
I'd make a motion to table that also for further review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, so the next two, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven and twenty twenty-five.
We can do Trinkles.
Twelve, so which one is Trinkles? Twelve, so which one is Trinkles?
Uh, it should be eleven, I wanted his first cuz we approved that back in July.
Okay, so. An ordinance to amend the zoning map of the town of Hanover Indy, Hanover, Jefferson County, Indiana. Whereas a request was made to change the zoning of three properties located in the town of Hanover, Jefferson County, Indiana. And whereas the petitioner owner desires to establish businesses and whereas the rezoning request aligns with the town of Hanover's comprehensive plan. And whereas the plan commission conducted a public hearing on June the twenty-third, twenty twenty-five to review the modifications and make a recommendation to the town council. And whereas the plan commission, following the public hearing, certified and forwarded a favorable recommendation to the town council. That the following rezoning amendments be made. The property location sixty-six oh seven West State Road fifty-six, Hanover, Indiana, four seven two four three. Sixty-five eighty-three West State Road fifty-six, Hanover, Indiana, four seven two four three. And one eight two four South Carmel Road, Hanover, Indiana, four seven two four three. All currently zoned as R A residential agriculture, cultural, to be B three highway commercial. The petitioner and owner Troy Trinkle, twenty-four thirteen Lakewood Boulevard, Jeffersonville, Indiana, four seven one three zero. Whereas the Hanover Town Council at its meeting on July the first, twenty twenty-five, accepted the recommendation of the plan commission by a five oh vote. Now therefore be it resolved that the properties listed above be rezoned to B three highway commercial and the town zoning map be changed accordingly. Duly passed and adopted this fifth day of August, twenty twenty-five at the town council of the town of Hanover, Jefferson County, Indiana. I will need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Is there? Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 And Kobe, you have to make sure he gets a signed copy, cuz he has to put that with his deed.
Signed copy.
And after you've signed it too, or attested to it.
Alright, so the twenty twenty-five twelve, we will table that.
Yes.
Alright, next Ball State to perform some planning for downtown Hanover, Chip, that's you.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Triva circulated an email that I sent to her, I think everybody did, everybody get that or anybody liked another copy of that, just the summary to have.
I like a copy.
One of them. Anybody else?
I'd like one.
You didn't get one on the top.
No, but I sent it. If you got enough for all of us, you might as well.
Yeah, let's just do that.
And give Bob one.
There you go.
Makes it easier for him to.
There you go.
Do his amendments.
I highlighted in yellow. Highlighted in yellow is really what we're focusing on. So this, this started, uh, several months ago when Barbara Ford said, uh, she wanted to talk to Ball State about doing some work in the community garden. About laying out some plans and maybe doing some different things. So she asked me to get on a call, I got on a call, and they started asking me questions about the town and Jefferson together and what's going on and the town comprehensive plan. And the folks on the other end of the line at Ball State started getting real interested, more interested in more than just the garden. So we were on the phone with them a few weeks ago and they came back with this proposal. And they said, you know what, we wanna do more than work with the garden. We would like to bring three Ball State classes to the town of Hanover and work on some planning. And you would have to cover our expenses, okay, so talk to us about what that is, that I can show you your breakdown, it's about twenty-two thousand dollars in total in expenses. Um, and they said, we wanna do three things, and the first one that you all got that I've highlighted, make sure I'm reading my own notes here. Is, um, a comprehensive planning studio class four oh one, and in parentheses, I put a downtown development plan. So what they would be doing is they would be looking at downtown Hanover, they'd be looking at the comp plan that you all had done. And they'd be narrowing down the comp plan, you know, the comp plan had certain recommendations. And eventually have to narrow that down, and that's what they wanna do, is begin to do some research to narrow that down, to see what could be done in downtown Hanover. And they would do all the research, and I've got, I've got the proposal, anybody wants to see it, I've got copies for everybody, but it's, it's a pretty detailed listing of things that they would do with their students. It's a full semester, it's sixteen weeks, it's an undergraduate class. They do data collection, community engagement, analysis of the data, uh, collation of the information. They develop a downtown plan, they present it to folks in the town, they would take information from that meeting, go back and redo the plan, they do a charrette or a drawing. They bring drawings and show people in the town. So it would be the next step, I think, in the comprehensive plan for downtown Hanover, is okay, what, let's do a little visioning. And it's gonna have some things that we'll never be able to do, you just know it will. They're probably gonna look at Fenwick's grocery and say, wouldn't it be good if that were gone and it were a two-story building like it was a hundred years ago? Well, I don't know how likely that is to happen, and they might not recommend that, but they could. Um, but they're probably gonna recommend things for, you know, what are we missing? Could we use a place to eat, could we use a place to shop, what do we need, uh, what would complement downtown? And that, that'll address some of the, uh, the, the comp plans. The second class they wanna do, and both of these are fall of twenty-five coming up, uh, landscape architecture class six oh three, and so this is, this is a graduate level course. And they wanna come in and they wanna draft, they're calling it a master plan for basically File and Madison area. Community gardens, in the area where the vacant houses are, File kind of as an entrance to Hanover. They wanna look at all of that and come up with some ideas on what that might look like. That would also be helpful to the college, because at some point we need to develop that land where the houses are. And we're busy, uh, talking these days about, you know, do we tear down the houses that are there? Can we save some of the houses that are there? So let's get with folks who know what they're doing to give us some ideas to say, well, maybe you can save these two over here and those over here and the rest need to go, just to get some ideas. So that would be helpful, and then the third class they wanna do, which I didn't highlight in yellow, but at least you'll know about it, is very specific to the community garden. And, and doing more planning for the community garden. And the reason I didn't highlight it is because in their budget of twenty-two thousand dollars, I look at it as coming out of two buckets if everybody wants to do this. There's the community garden bucket, and then there's the historic corridor revitalization bucket. And I've looked at it a couple of different ways, and almost no matter how you look at it, it kinda splits down the middle. I think the community garden would do a little bit more, would pay a little bit more of, of the middle. Um, so what's highlighted in yellow and then at the bottom of that sheet, and they would have, oh, by the way, they have a student liaison and intern, uh, to help coordinate everything. Um, so the proposal at the bottom would be to engage Ball State to do these two classes. With money not to exceed ten thousand eight hundred, that's a little more, a little less than half, uh, from the Jefferson together, uh, historic corridor revitalization bucket. And I've got, I can be all, this is a breakdown of what it would look like, the cost. The yellow column is the town panel for the, uh, historic corridor revitalization column. And the garden, the garden folks have already approved what they would like to do, they're fine with this, they wanna do that third one that I didn't highlight in yellow. Um, so they're, they're fine to move forward, I presented this to Lake Lambert just so he would know. And he thinks it's a good idea, he thinks it seems like a next step in the comp plan. And in that email that Triva, uh, circulated, I listed a handful of the, um, the town comp plans that are addressed by doing something like this. In the end, cuz I've talked to a couple of people, like, I've talked to a couple of architects, is this something we should be thinking about? And if we do, is it a good deal? Cuz I like to think that way. This is probably work that would cost thirty to fifty thousand dollars if we went up to another firm to do it, pretty easily. Um, I like the idea that it's an Indiana university who has experience in other towns in Indiana coming to do it. So I think it's worth looking at, but we wouldn't wanna take that step without talking to you all first, because the historic corridor revitalization bucket is one that the town panel oversees. And right now, we've just used it for, uh, the Milliken House and the Mill, those are the two, uh, things that have come out of that so far. So, it did, so, it's just under eleven thousand bucks. Questions, what do you all think?
I think it'd complicate things with the people who are already paying to do it.
It's gonna take some coordination.
I think it would slow the process too much with Luckett and Farley to try to coordinate with two other companies and all battling to design something different. I think it could get really, really complicated on that aspect.
Yeah, we don't know, it don't need complicated. If Luckett and Farley were designing something downtown on buildings or trying to come up with plans, they're really focusing on sidewalks and streetscapes right now. That's what Luckett's role in all of this is, is just, you know, fill in the gaps and let's come up with some, some things that look good and look interesting in the town.
Right. Right.
This is different con, this is, this is a broader.
This is a different pile of money too, right?
No.
Uh, it is, it is, and Luckett and Farley's, uh, sidewalks and streetscapes, that's their bucket, that's formerly their bucket.
No, it's a different element. Yeah.
This is the story.
Historic corridors, three point three million.
This is a story. Yeah, this is coming out of the historic money, this has nothing to do with Luckett and Farley.
That's the, that's the same place it's coming from, man.
No.
Three point three million.
It's different.
But that doesn't mean we wouldn't have asked Luckett and Farley to look at that.
Right, right, but they, that, we've not, so far Luckett and Farley.
But as Chip just said, it costs a lot more.
Is just doing the park and, and the other.
Do the other, you could go to Luckett and Farley for this and say, okay, take our town comp plan and let's kind of begin to narrow down what that might look like in the core of downtown. Forget, you know, some of the other places in town that didn't sound right, but it's just focusing on the core, the old core.
Right.
Um, and they would do that, but it would probably be pretty pricey, and.
Costs more, yeah.
I think it, you know, I think it's worth, I think it's worth bringing in a group of, of students and, and architects and urban planners who do this. Let's see what they can come up with, I don't like to throw around money like that, but I think it's probably a pretty good.
Well, and it's.
Yeah.
As I said earlier, Ball State, everybody thinks Hanover didn't have a comp plan. Ball State did Hanover's first comp plan, we didn't do anything with it, while we were in on the council then, but those students did that, yeah.
They did. Okay. They did that.
Yeah.
It, it will certainly come up with things that you look at and say, I don't like that, but it should come up with things that you say, I do like that, or what if you tweak this?
I mean, for ten thousand dollars, that's our part, I would be okay with it.
Yeah, I would as long as they're not, if they're not involved with Luckett and Farley at all.
Yeah, no, no, it's a, it's a different.
No, you're.
I don't want any contact between them and Luckett and Farley.
Yeah. No, no.
Well, yeah, we don't.
My opinion.
No, no, I, well, that's, I put in there, it's, it's gonna take some coordination, because we've got the, we've got Luckett, we've got the town comp plan, we've got Indiana Landmark running around, now we've got these folks.
Yeah.
Well, I think if they're gonna do this, they kinda run with their own thing and don't contact Luckett and Farley, mess with them on what they're doing or.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
You know, that, just what I think.
Yeah.
I don't want, I don't wanna slow that process at all.
No, I'm here.
Yeah.
And Luckett might wanna look at this and say.
They may look at it, you know.
You know, we had thought of that board, they're crazy, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
They may, you know, but the intentions with them are to, down the road, to go in phases, I mean, what, what you're talking about doing now would have been one of the other phases down the road.
It could have been.
For Luckett and Farley.
Probably for them.
Yeah.
It wouldn't surprise me if at some point you take this information from Ball State and take it to a, a professional firm and say, okay, we like these things, circle the things you like.
I think that would be great, you know, if they'd done this and, let's say, whether it's Luckett and Farley or somebody totally different.
You need that help build.
We have that report from, uh, Ball State, say, hey, this is what they've come up with. What do you guys think, and, and roll from there, but I wouldn't want them trying to work directly with Luckett and Farley and.
No duplication.
And interchanging what may be done on the sidewalk because they think they want this, you know.
Yeah. They may have ideas about sidewalks, I don't know, well, they will, I'm sure they will have ideas about everything.
Right.
I see it as, yeah, I think we're basically looking at, if we have gaps or holes in our master plan now, this would be.
But that would slow Luckett down.
Yeah.
A, a good strategic way to, to fill those gaps and holes. Um, so that we can kinda work more smoothly in the future as we're continuing on all these projects. Um, and I do like the investing in, in students.
I do too.
Like experiential learning, things to get on your resume, seeing like work actually come to life is, is a big deal for college students and, and worth an investment, so.
Yeah.
And you said Lake thought it was.
Lake thought it was good, I met with him to see what he thought, um, and he thinks it sounds like kind of the next logical step on some of the, the comp plan. Besides, part of it is, you know, just kinda, you just keep narrowing down until the day you actually start with a sh- you get a shovel and start doing it. Um, so we're just narrowing down, I think, so it seems like a reasonable thing to do. Uh, in the garden, no matter what, the garden's gonna go ahead with their piece, they really wanna get that done, and I, I appreciate it that they started.
Right.
And they've got their own money.
And they've got their own bucket.
Will students be in town, like circulating and things like that?
Yeah.
They will be, they'll come to town a handful of times, they'll end up needing to spend the night, uh, on occasion, so that's, that's really their expenses. I did confirm with them Saturday, I was talking to one of the fellows. Uh, that it's a maximum, that it will be their actual expenses not to exceed this number, so hopefully comes in lots.
Would it make sense to like, I don't know if it would be on our end to whip up some like badges on lanyards that people who are visiting and working on projects, like. Indiana landmarks.
To identify people.
Like, hey, I'm here working on town project.
See them on the street, you wonder.
Right, it's a small town and we're like stranger.
Just like you're doing with your signs to say what we're doing, identify the people, yeah.
You know, it's funny, it's simple, sometimes you just gotta tell people what you're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and just to have some kind of indicator that you're here working on a project for the town.
Well, that's a good idea.
I know like some college campuses will have that, when they have a vendor on campus, they'll have like, somebody have a, a badge, um, with just really basic information on it.
And the college could easily do that.
Oh, yeah, we get, lancers together, it's a good idea.
So, an amount up to ten thousand eight hundred.
Yeah, that's exactly how the math worked out, based on the splits that I did, I mean, I did even splits where it made sense. But for instance, you know, where it's working in downtown and not in the garden, I didn't try to put any of that expense on the garden bucket, but where they're doing work on the garden.
Right, right.
We shouldn't put that expense on the historic corridor bucket either.
Right, right. So, Erbe agree?
Yeah, Luckett and Farley not involved in it.
Okay. I make a motion to spend up to ten thousand eight hundred dollars on this project. As long as Luckett and Farley's not involved in it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 While you're up there.
Yes.
So, we got the face back from, and you got a copy, Matt sent it to you, right?
Oh, yes, I've got an email from him, I haven't read, I'm sorry to give you.
So, we need to, I mean, we need to decide if Lily's gonna, I mean, it's time to reach out to Lily, cuz we wanna approve this and get moving on it.
Yeah, yeah. I, I'm gonna read it one more time, I read the language in the grant yesterday, just to see whether or not we even need to go to Lily. Because it is, it's pretty broad, it talks about sidewalks, safe crossings. So, I, I don't think there's gonna be any issues, it probably doesn't hurt to raise it to Lily, but I don't think we need to go to her permission, but sometimes you just wanna be cuter safe with Sally.
Yeah, we don't, we don't wanna sign a contract and then you have no money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it talks about the traffic on, on fifty-six.
Yeah, it's in there.
It's, it's in there, I think even broadly we didn't say, well, yeah, this is, was it what we were all thinking?
Right.
I don't know, I wasn't thinking that initially, but here we are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's a safety thing.
Yeah.
So, uh, yeah, we, we don't wanna hold it up any longer, let me read it one more time, I'll hear it tomorrow, you'll have an email tomorrow.
Right. Yeah.
But I do think it's good at least, check with them.
Yeah, I will, I mean, just to, just to make sure.
There's no hiding anything from them, you know.
Right.
No.
And by the way, Lily Endowment's annual report came out recently, it's a big report they do every year. And three colleges were highlighted in there, Rose Hallman, Ball State, and Hanover for this program. And that's actually really nice that they did that.
But there were what, just four that got the extra money, and we're one of them.
Well, yeah, there, one above.
Yeah.
Um, there were fourteen or fifteen schools, in total it was four hundred and thirty-five million dollars they set aside, it's tremendous. I can't imagine who did that count.
Well, I'll shoot an email to you and Matt tomorrow and just say, hey, Chip's looking at it again and, cuz we wanna hopefully make a decision at the next meeting.
Okay. Yeah. Yes, oh, yeah, let's, it's time.
Okay.
It's time.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
If you think of anything else on this, give me a shout.
Okay, and I did send you a copy of the, the park one. Where Matt was up here.
Oh, okay, cuz that may be one of the.
We need to decide on that soon too.
Yeah, well, we just, I just sent that out, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you come up with a little bit of a plan for that?
Yeah, yeah, so, but I sent that and I sent it to the council and I, I think we've got one printed off for you, Tim. Yeah, so, but I sent that and I sent it to the council and I, I think we've got one printed off for you, Tim.